...order, the meeting at Monday, August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at five P M. Those in attendance are King Wesson, June Fratton, David Huggins. At this time, we'd like to have the pledge of allegiance and prayer by Mr. Christopher S. Hope.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, I thank you for letting us all be here tonight. Thank you for the great leaders in our community. Thank you for the people on this school board who care about us kids at the high school, middle school, and elementary school. Be with everyone as they go from the start. We are up there.
Thanks, man.
Appreciate you.
Okay, approval of the minutes of the July tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Most approved. Most approved the minutes of the July tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting by King Wesson, second. Jennifer, Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
Approval of the encumbrances.
Okay, we have a lot of encumbrances. This is the time of year we do all our blanket POs. Basically, it's kind of everything we spend every year. Different companies that just kind of roll over each year. But we'll look, and I kind of want to go over some of the bigger ones, if you have any questions. Uh, PO seventeen, that Stigler Municipal Improvement, that's our water bill for two thousand. That just kind of gets us through the year. Hopefully it won't be that much, but at least that'll be what we spent this year. PSO, one hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred. That's PO twenty-two. The next page, page two. Same thing, these are all blanket POs. The one that's kind of, the PO fifty-two to the line length, that is our copy machine rental. That D L L Incorporated are, we actually have another one with Advanced Copier, but that's for the service agreement. So we pay a rental and a service agreement, they're kind of two different companies. I always thought we would just have Advanced Copier, that's all, only one we deal with, but Advanced Copier actually leases them. Uh, Aspen County Sash reports, four hundred and three thousand there, that's PO fifty-four. First D, first D count through there, United System Renewal, that's for our monthly monitoring of fire alarms, that sort of thing. Sixty-nine, seventy, that's for High Exile and Managed Learning. Seventy-one, thirty-two, just reimbursements for the year, if we need it. PO seventy-five, Prosperity, that's for our O P and P T, uh, facial therapy and physical therapy contract with that Prosperity Therapy. Starting at PO eighty-three, that's for professional development, conferences, training, that goes up to the next page, on down to eighty-nine. Or ninety-two, those are all reimbursements for child nutrition training, eighty-nine, ninety-one, ninety-two. At the PO ninety-three through ninety-seven, those are POs we put out for people getting physical, that's our bus drivers and our cooks. Anybody a child of Christian, they have to get physical, so that's for. And then you see down through there, Alpha Plus textbook, have been done for grade school. And then down through, we have more reimbursements for professional development, and some supplies that needed. Like I said, all these are all blankets, just kind of out there in case we need them. Uh, next page, more reimbursements for V D. You'll see some for supplies, for sharps, those are for uniforms for child nutrition. On down, PO one twenty-eight, let's see, the Lowe's, those are new kitchen appliances, have Carl Perkins phones. Those are career tech, or career tech programs, we rotate those around each year. This year it's for Family Consumer Sciences, and she was able to get some new kitchen appliances, so that's what PO one twenty-eight is. And one thirty-one, those are all Family Consumer Sciences out of Carl Perkins. And the Green Box Learning, those are Region Plus, we've got pretty good success with at the high school and some middle schools doing that as well, and that's PO one thirty-eight. One thirty-nine through one forty-three, that's for the van, Color Guard, music, instruments, routines, and that's. And more, Blue Walker, that's reimbursement per uniform, and physicals, and just get on supplies. So that is our general fund POs. Our next one is the encumbrances, the payroll encumbrances. And those are our... Those are for our twelve-month employees, and we've got them, if you can see that PO seven thousand, seven thousand twenty-one. I really like this, they're going to split up our contracted amounts from our, as needed, or timesheet, and that's the eight thousand ones. This first one, seven thousand, one for seven thousand twenty, or our twelve-month contracts. And starting at eight thousand ones, those are our timesheet encumbrances. So that'd be like your ballgame prep, cleanup, substitutes, driver's ed, any extra athletic duty. Just tutoring, anything out of federal programs, all that are blankets out of eight thousand, and those are for the year. All those things. The next one goes into the building fund. And you can see there, like PO number two, that's where we did for the jam reseal, repaint. PO one was for the structural integrity analysis, and that's the total cost, that actually is three thousand, two hundred and fifty. Uh, PO three was concrete, they took some, put some concrete down at the grade school for the annual go. PO four is to the architect projects. PO five, six, and seven are all supplies for the repainting of the grade school main building, repaint, reseal that. Uh, PO eight to Brady Industries, that's an industrial floor cleaner. Our other one was about twenty-something years old, we can't, that's the one that was up down the halls at the high school, cleaned it every night. And the next one are the dehumidifiers for each classroom in the elementary school, that's, you know, remember our... Our analysis of the air quality, one thing we'll just do is just two damp in there, so all that, each room's got a dehumidifier. And all of this will be at federal and it'll be reimbursed. So we should, once we get that done, we'll get that reimbursed. Uh, next one's Child Nutrition Program, and these are all blankets as well, for different things, like Cisco's a big one, that's where we get food from. Island Dairy Milk, that's a big one. PSO for Electric, Benny Keith, Tankersley, those are all food. Got Sunnys and Walmart down there, that's just for if they run out of something, they can run down and get it, like buns, or bread, or something like that. With Trastorres, it's PO fourteen. These we have to have, the PO nineteen is K T C Distribution, and that is for our third meal. So those are after-school programs where we can, it's kind of a packaged meal, but that'll be, I think that's going to be a good thing, so we're going to try that. That is Child Nutrition. The next one is our one twelve-month employee, uh, Child Nutrition, that's payroll encumbrance for Joe Farley, our Child Nutrition Director. Next one, next page, is our gift funds, and this PO one is for the Dale Parays Scholarship. PO two is the Holly Henderson. PO three and four are the Do Love Bock Bock Guardians, so those are encumbered this month. And that is our encumbrances.
Make motion for the encumbrances by Kenny, second by June Fratton, Kenny?
Yes.
Other financial reports.
Right. Not a lot on this first couple. First one, you see our payroll, we're up about eight thousand, eight hundred. A lot of that difference is lower, five thousand, we paid our drivers' ed in July this year instead of June, and so it actually increases about thirty-eight hundred, and that's due to the raises. So you're going to see a lot of that this year, and I don't know how much useful this will be this year, but our raises are going to cost the district about a little over six hundred thousand for the year. So each month's going to be, you know, at least fifty thousand higher as we go through the year, but that's, that's the statement of the day to raises. Of course, in September, we'll have that seven percent for Child Nutrition, and that'll bring it up about eight thousand for that. So that is our, that's going to be a big difference. Our bills for this month were down about twenty-four thousand, but also last year, we also bought carpet for about thirty-one thousand. So we didn't do that this year, so it's, we're down a little bit, but there's, you know, it's kind of hard to, each month's going to be a little bit different, and different big things come in. But for the total for the year so far, we're down about sixteen thousand. Like I said, when that starts, when our big payroll starts hitting, it's going to start going. Hopefully, our, but our bills are something we can compare a little bit, and there are going to be some barriers month to month, but, uh, I think it's still a pretty good report. I'm not sure about the salary, may work with something a little bit different on that after a month or two, but it'll give us an idea of kind of where we're at. Next one, you see, we're about two point three million in our general fund. Uh, we got eight seven thousand in this month through our tax commission, through just some claims. We did not get our county four mill from the county, we're not sure, to be honest, what we're going to do about that, what the situation is, but we've got, I'll be working on that, and we need, we need that every month. It's not a huge thing, last month, for last year in July is about thirty-two thousand, but a big one will be by January, and we have to have it straightened out. Uh, next one, building fund, about one point seven million. We should start getting our, uh, they said building fund's going to kind of like state aid, come every month this year, or basically it's the Red Blood Fund we're really talking about. Haven't seen any, well, Thursday we're supposed to get our first state appropriation, so we'll see what comes. But that'll increase that, last, should help back quite a bit. Uh, next one, Child Nutrition, about two hundred and seventy-two thousand, we're doing good there, hopefully we can keep that up for as long as possible. That is our other financial reports.
Public comment, uh, Board of Education has public comment at this point of the meeting. Comments concerning agenda items and reports for policy B E D dash R, no one here for that. Information items, superintendent's report.
Okay, good thing we've got the school year started, teachers reported a week ago, and students reported last Thursday, so we're excited to get, kind of get a routine started. The after-school program started today, that'll be a big, there's been some, you know, congestion down there in the afternoon, this will help a little bit with that. I don't know, we usually, last year they had about a hundred, a hundred and twenty kids participate, so hopefully that's going to help our congestion down there. Uh, fast pit softball's well underway, they went to the Broken Arrow Turnip past weekend, they went two and two there. Their overall record's currently four and two, doing well. Uh, two losses are from Owasso and Edmond Memorial, and they're ranked number one and two in six items, so playing really good competition, and doing well, so we're excited for them. Had a red and white game football, uh, Friday night, pretty good turnout for that. Uh, first scrimmage will be Friday night with Pacola here, and the next game, first game is next Friday at Salisa. So we just have one scrimmage, we've kind of done that last couple of years, and then there'll be like a bye weekend or something, kind of play on zero week. So the main thing, I'm really excited to get the year started and for the opportunities we have this year, and we're ready to get into a routine.
Superintend? Action topics, action topic A, consideration of approval of Professional Development Committee for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Okay, this is the committee that kind of helps plan our professional development throughout the year. You see the list of members, and it's just something we have to approve each year. Made a couple of changes, uh, different parents stepping along, eight different council members, Bailey Banks, the rest of us.
Make motion that we approve Professional Development Committee for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Second. Motion by Jennifer, second by Kenny, to approve the Professional Development Committee for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Action topic B, consideration of contract with Dunkville State Board of Career Technology Education for Vocational Programs for the twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
And this is the contract for our career tech supplemental funds for our three career tech programs we have at the high school and middle school. Some, uh, that's Ag Education, Family Consumer Science, and Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, or STEM program. So if you look at that, you know, kind of that contract, you see project code four twelve, and that is, four twelve is for supplies and other things that each, uh, each program may need throughout the year. Like Ag Education, which by the way, was fully funded this year, so you know, we had last year was not fully funded, this year we're funded, so, uh, each Ag teacher gets the full four twelve amount, and a full four eleven. Just like Ag, they're going to get twenty-six thousand, Family Consumer Science, eight, and STEM gets ninety-five hundred, and that's for supplies. Uh, the salary portion is the four eleven, and that's kind of a supplement to their salary, you'll see that Ag's quite a bit higher, but a lot of that's for their summertime employment, because they are twelve months. That's what that first, that fifteen thousand, eight forty is for. Then down below that is the, during the year. So that is our contract with career.
Make motion, we, uh, contract with Dunkville State Board of Career Technology Education for Vocational Programs for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Motion by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to approve the contract with Dunkville State Board of Career Technology Education for Vocational Programs for the twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Action topic C, in Davison, consideration of bids for Hay and the Connerland for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Hey, we received two bids for this, and the highest bid was one thousand, eleven dollars from Bumper Construction, and I recommend we accept this.
Make motion that we accept the bid from Bumper Construction for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Second. Motion by Jennifer to approve the bid with, uh, Bumper's Construction for Hay at the Connerland for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the second by Kenny. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny? And David, yes. Consideration of meal prices for the two or three, two-fourth year.
Okay, this is an increase of the full price by ten cents for breakfast and lunch. And really, the only reason we did that is because, uh, the National School Lunch Program regulates the minimum price you can charge, and if you don't charge that amount, you have to raise it by ten cents every year until you hit that. And currently, uh, with our increase of ten cents, we put it one thirty-five for a full breakfast, and currently the minimum is two thirty-five. So according to them, we're going to have to raise it ten cents until we reach that, but we're just going to raise it ten cents a year. And then the student lunch is now two thirty-five, and full pay there's minimum is three ninety-three, so we're just going to raise it ten cents. But that's set by the National School Lunch Program, we just, we have to increase by a minimum of ten cents each year until we reach that cost. So we'll go to ten cents.
Make motion that we, uh, that the school meal prices for the twenty-three, twenty-three school year. Second. Motion by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to approve the school meal prices for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And David, yes. Action topic A, consideration approval of F C C L A Attending the Capital Leadership Training in Washington, D C from October eighth to the thirteenth of twenty twenty-three. Students will be transported by school vehicle to Tulsa Airport for flight.
So there, this is for forced ins to go to Washington, D C, and this is for leadership training for students to learn advocacy and leadership skills, and meet with the nation's leaders. Uh, kind of one of the big reasons that she wanted to do this, we've had several students apply for national offices within the Family Consumer Science Organization, and they didn't get the position. And when you send that in, they'll send back a, you know, what, what do you need, what's lacking in your application? One of the big reasons they don't attend, uh, national conferences, and so this one and the next one, uh, is kind of a reason, one of the big reasons for this, number one, and number two, it'd be great for these kids to get out and see, see some things like that. So we would like to allow these students that opportunity to participate in these leadership conferences.
And what'd you say it's going to cost?
It's a twelve hundred dollars per student, they're taking four members, and they're raised by, all these funds are raised by F C C.
Make motion that we approve for the S C C, S C C L A Attending the Capital Leadership Training in Washington, D C on October eighth through thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Second. Motion by Jennifer, second by Kenny, to approve F C C L A Attending the Capital Leadership Training in Washington, D C on October eighth through the thirteenth of two thousand twenty-three. Students will be transported by school vehicle to Tulsa Airport for flight. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And David, yes. Consideration of F C C L A Attending the National Ball Conference in Birmingham, Alabama, Alabama on November ninth through thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Students will be transported by charter buses.
Hey, this is another national conference, it'll be for different students, and it's similar by leadership training and opportunities, and they will be transported by charter buses with other groups to go to Alabama.
Make motion to approve the S C C L A Attending the National Ball Conference in Birmingham, Alabama on November the ninth through the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Motion by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to approve F C C L A Attending the National Ball Conference in Birmingham, Alabama on November ninth through the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. For this, and for the students to be transported by charter buses. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And David, yes. Consideration of adoption or revision of the following school board policies. Number one, school board, third.
Yes, yes, please.
Number one. Please, Jim. Okay, I'm sorry, sorry, I don't know what you're doing. Consideration of approval of high school band trip to Orlando, Florida from May thirteenth to seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Students will be transported by charter buses.
Yeah, this is for the trip, band takes every other year, kind of their big trip, and so they're, we're trying to get some early approvals so they can start that fundraising.
Second. Motion by Jennifer, second by Kenny, to approve the high school band trip to Orlando, Florida from May thirteenth to seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Students will be transported by charter buses. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And David, yes. Action topic H, consideration of adoption or revision of the following school board policies. Number one, school security drills, A K, A D. One more time.
Now, we can, we can do all of them. Okay, this first one, it just changes what it used to be, instead of four security drills, you could say, two lockdown and two intruder drills. So what, what's happened is you're getting confused with lockdown, this intruder, where we do different, and so now what, kind of been the recommendation, we have four security drills. The only thing we're changing really is four security drills instead of two lockdown and two intruder. That eliminates some of the confusion.
Make motion to approve safety drills. Motion by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to approve the school's safety drills, A K, A D. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And David, yes. Number two, safety drills, A K, C, it'll be C K C. Make this one. This one. Okay, school security drills, C K C, right, what we just did. We took this one. Oh, I'm sorry.
We took that out because it, what it did, it basically said every step you do, and we're not, and we're not, but every school's different. Every school's going to have something a little bit different, and we don't want one set of policies, that's why that one's changed.
So should, we should do the child nutrition physicals?
Right, right.
Okay, number two, child nutrition physical fitness program, school wellness.
Okay, the only change we're doing here is we're taking out specific names, like it says, what it said first, with Superintendent Monty Guthrie with him. So we took out the specific name and put superintendent, instead of the names of the coordinators, for the wellness coordinator, each side, we just put, we put the list of wellness coordinators by principle, not the specific name, otherwise we'd have to change it every time. Person changes, and remember it changes every time a person changes. So that's the only difference.
I make motion that we approve the child nutrition physical fitness programs for the wellness policies. Second. Motion by Jennifer, first, second by Kenny, to approve the child nutrition physical fitness program, school wellness policy. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And David, yes. Three, maternity leave.
Hey, this is a new policy, that new law that, uh, that came out with, but basically, this is provide six weeks of maternity leave for female employees employed for at least one year, or twelve hundred and fifty hours. And six weeks will be immediately following the birth of the child for the next six weeks. So it's not like they just get it, if it's in the summertime, they can take it the first year, it starts the day after they have the, have the baby, the next six weeks, they can take maternity.
Make motion to approve maternity leave policy. Second. Motion by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to approve the maternity leave policy. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And David, yes. Number four, family medical.
And this just includes maternity leave as one of the types of leave that must be exhausted before they're placed on unpaid fending. So we had to add maternity leave in, so it's a new leave.
Make motion to approve the family medical policy. Second. Motion by Jennifer, second by Kenny, to approve family medical leave policy. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And David, yes. Number five, restraints and seclusion.
Hey, this is a new policy that's related to restraint of students that provide the specific steps required mainly for I E P students, which means that's unmarked for each I E P student. We've been doing that for years, but we really need that in policy.
Make motion to approve the restraints and seclusion policy. Second. Motion by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to approve the restraints and seclusion policy. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Number six, suspension of students.
Hey, this is a change that provides administration the ability to modify a case-by-case basis, automatic suspensions for one year in possession of a firearm. So what this is for, we've had several last year, not in our school, but several schools around, they may have been duck hunting that weekend before, and they left the shotgun in the backseat of the pickup. Well, they're automatically gone for one year, doesn't matter, it doesn't matter yet. So this kind of, you know, they obviously they shouldn't have it, obviously we need to do something, but I don't know, if you're automatically gone for a year, there's nothing we can do. This kind of modifies it where we can look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Make motion to approve the suspension of students' policy. Motion by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to approve the suspension, suspension of students' policy. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And David, yes. Number seven, this money action for misuse of school bathrooms and changing facilities.
And this is in addition to, last year we had to do that, where mainly this change is for, uh, change in the law that modifies when a coach can enter a locker room. So the main change is if there's a coaches of the opposite sex, the coach must be accompanied by at least one adult of the same sex as a student president. An adult can't be an eighteen-year-old student, it's got to be an adult, and they go in, they check, make sure he's clothed, and then they say, come in. Basically, that allows that coach the opposite sex, uh, before, during, or after a school-sponsored activity. Just kind of clarify. Just kind of clarify that, school bathroom and changing facilities policy.
But it was just for the coaches?
Yeah, it just changed, the only thing it changed from what we have is that, is that underlying part, like if a suitable meeting room or area is not available, a coach may enter a locker room. That's what's changed.
I make motion that we approve policy disciplinary action for issues of school bathrooms and changing facilities.
Second.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Kenny to approve the disciplinary action for issues of school bathrooms and changing facilities policy. Jennifer?
Kenny? Yes.
And David, yes. Action Topic A: Consideration of School Resource Officer Agreement with the City of Stigler Police Department for the 2023-24 School Year.
Okay, we received a school security grant for, it's for ninety-two thousand per year, and we can use that to hire a school resource officer, resource officer, or implement other safety measures like locks, windows, doors, and cameras. What I would like to propose is that we enter an agreement with the Stigler Police Department, have a full-time officer present in our school during, uh, this next school year. And they will do the DARE program, other educational programs, drug and alcohol prevention programs, and other similar programs, and probably most importantly, they'll have a constant presence throughout the year while building relationships with the student, staff, and parents. But I think this is a really great opportunity for us to get a resource officer. And this is ninety thousand, two thousand per year for the next three years.
Make motion to approve the school resource officer agreement with the City of Stigler Police Department for the 2023-24 School Year. Motion by Kenny, second by Jennifer to approve the consider, to approve the school resource officer agreement with the City of Stigler Police Department for the 2023-24 School Year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Action Topic J: Consideration of Maturity Investments for the 2023-24 School Year.
Okay, this investment matures on August twenty-ninth, and they, uh, the banks will not quote us rates this early. And so what we need to do, if possible, is I need an approval to renew this investment and maturity date at the best available rate. So we'll go after the banks in the area, try to get their best rate, and then we're just gonna go with the best rate for five hundred thousand.
I make a, I'm trying to think how, or did I make a motion that we allow the superintendent to invest five hundred thousand with the local events regardless of the best interest rate?
Second.
Motion by Jennifer.
Yes.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Kenny to approve the investment proposal to invest up to five hundred thousand dollars into a six-month CD. Give that approval to the superintendent. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And David, yes. Action Topic K: Consideration of Bids for the Kindergarten Entry Vestibule.
Okay, now we tabled this last, uh, last meeting, we've got some more bids. We actually just got one other bid from this, from Robert Zachary, but two bids on this latest one. Uh, lowest bid was from Robert Zachary, forty-six thousand seven hundred. Uh, the other bid was. Uh, the other bid was seventy-one thousand five hundred, and they bid the very first time we did it, and they bid it for fifty-eight thousand. So I really don't know why they increased the bid this much. Yeah, I do think we need to accept the lowest bids, I understand that, you know, the cost is high, but I don't think at this point we're gonna get a lower bid. And in the future, in this project, and really all these projects, are something I think we need to do.
And it's gonna take fifteen days to complete?
When they get started, it's gonna take at least fifteen days, or three weeks to get material. But once they get started, it'll get better.
Make motion to approve the bids for kindergarten entry vestibule for Robert Zachary, forty-six seven hundred. That was for forty-seven.
Yeah, forty-six thousand seven hundred.
Motion by Kenny, second by Jennifer to approve the kindergarten entry vestibule with Robert Zachary, low bid at forty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
This is all the best.
Yeah, I think Robert, we want to go back and check his number after we went through the bidding process, and you looked at everybody else's. Uh, the next one?
It's all right. Action Topic L: Consideration of Bids for Elementary Entry Canopy Project.
Hey, we received three bids for this project. Lowest bid was again from Robert Zachary, fifty-seven thousand five hundred fifteen. The other two bids were for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand and a hundred and eight thousand five hundred sixty. And I think we need to accept the lowest bid.
Where was this, I see the diagram, exactly, where is this coming from and going to?
It's kind of hard to tell, but like, this is the front of the grade school. Right here is like the main door.
Okay, okay, so this is from the side.
Kind of that drop off, where they drop them off. Right here is the main doors. This is, this wide, which is confusing, that's the, these are the main doors right here. So it's gonna go down there, it's ten feet forward, it's wide, and it's seventy-four foot long.
I make a motion that we accept the lowest bid for the elementary school can, canopy, which will be in Robert Zachary's basement, fifty-seven thousand five hundred fifty dollars.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Kenny to approve the elementary canopy project with low bid from Robert Zachary, fifty-seven thousand five hundred fifteen dollars. Jennifer?
Kenny? Yes.
And David, yes. Action Topic M: Consideration of Bids for the Middle School Canopy Project.
Hey, we received three bids for this project, lowest bid was from Robert Zachary for ninety-eight thousand seven hundred fifty. Other bids were three hundred and fifteen thousand and two hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred sixty. I do think we need to accept this bid, it is a lot of money, but they're, these are large canopies, they're two different canopies. Uh, the total's about a hundred and seventy-five foot long.
Is it two or three?
Twelve foot wide, it's two. That's, so that was a rough up before we landed here. This is, and it's down here. That's the main entrance, right, next to the cafeteria, right now they just run in, where are you? This is from fifth grade up the road.
Okay. Fifth grade, after we're over there from, maybe the cafeteria.
It fits a lot of money.
Make motion to approve the lowest for, uh, canopy project with Robert Zachary. Ninety-eight thousand seven hundred. Motion by Kenny, second by Jennifer to approve the middle school canopy project with Robert Zachary, low bid of ninety-eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And David, yes. Action Topic N: Consideration of Bids for the High School Entry Project.
Hey, this just goes along, basically along the wall of the, uh, auditorium, kind of to the front doors.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, when we took that, all they had before, that little overhang, we took that out, and we did our entryway. The trees die, so basically they've got a little shrub they'll huddle around.
This is ten foot tall.
Yeah, this one's nine foot four inch. That's fifty-two foot long. And there was three bids, Robert Zachary was forty-three thousand four hundred and sixty. Uh, other bid was for ninety thousand and sixty-six thousand. I think we need to accept the lowest bid.
I make a motion that we accept the bid for the, um, high school canopy for Robert Zachary, fifty-three thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Kenny to approve the high school canopy project with Robert Zachary, forty-three thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And David, yes. At this time, we move to executive session. A proposed executive session discussing act upon the following business pursuant to twenty-five OS real estate B1, a open reading act. Action Topic. One, discussion of the resignation of Cambridge Garner, grade school reading app assistant effective July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion of the resignation of Stephanie Guthrie, middle school counselor effective August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion to employ a second, to employ a second grade teacher for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Discussion to employ a grade school teacher assistant for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Five, discussion to employ Hannah Spearman as a certified adjunct teacher to teach science for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Motion by Kenny, second by Jennifer to move to the executive session. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Motion to return to open session, seconded by, by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And David, what time? Six twenty-eight PM. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And David, yes. Starting up the executive session, our board president, members present during the executive session, Kenny Wittson, Jennifer Turner, David Huggins. Superintendent Tom Kellis was also present for executive sessions, no votes, no motions or votes were taken during any session, executive session. Items discussed during the executive session was the resignation of Cameron Garner, a resignation of Stephanie Guthrie, a consideration to hire a second grade teacher, consideration to hire a, uh, grade school teacher assistant, consideration to employ Hannah Spearman as a certified adjunct teacher to teach science for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Can I let this through, David? I make motion that we accept the resignations of Cameron Garner for its, uh, August twenty-fifth, July twenty, twenty-three, and the resignation of Stephanie Guthrie, middle school counselor effective August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Kenny to approve the resignation of Cameron Garner, grade school reading app assistant effective July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, and the resignation of Stephanie Guthrie, middle school counselor effective August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And David, yes. I'm making a, a motion to employ Emily Bussie, uh, as a second grade teacher for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Motion by Kenny, second by Jennifer to employ a second grade teacher, Emily Bussie, second grade teacher for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And David, yes.
I make a motion that we employ Catherine Lee, uh, grade school teacher assistant for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Kenny to hire Catherine Lee, grade school teacher assistant for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And David, yes. I make motion to employ Hannah Spearman as a certified adjunct teacher to teach science for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Motion to employ Hannah Spearman as a certified adjunct teacher to teach the, by, motion by Kenny, second by Jennifer, Kenny, right. To employ Hannah Spearman as a certified adjunct teacher to teach science, uh, teach science for the twenty-two, twenty-four school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Uh, new business?
We have no new business.
I make motion that we join.
Second.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Kenny, that we join at six-thirty-one PM. Jennifer?
Yes.